Molly in there, Molly, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yes, okay, great. Uh, I'm gonna call it back into open session to read me on session number one D and ask for uh an item one E. Uh, a motion to approve the agenda, is there a motion? A second here. I lost my sound temporarily, so please give me a moment here.
Okay, we are recording, just wanna make sure, some people asked if it was gonna be.
Alright, uh, so I saw motion in the second, uh, I believe so on a voice vote, please take my base uh saying I all in favor of approving the agenda. Hi, okay, motion carries, perfect, alright, number two, new business discussion, current COVID numbers, I'm gonna turn this over to you, Ms. Weiss.
So I would say that A, A and B are just some, some data points that I wanted to share and then um. Or A is are some data points I wanna share, B is gonna be much more of a discussion, um, so A, our current COVID numbers. Uh, Monday for staff, we had thirteen staff out in both buildings. Today it was down to ten due to some staff obviously being able to return, um, with no new cases, students, um, Monday. We had seven at Parkway, nineteen at Glen Hills. Um, all students um tested positive during the break. So, and there were no student cases as of two thirty today, um, that were at school when we were notified. So they were all from over break. Attendance, we're also monitoring because we knew there were families that would choose to keep kids home. Which is obviously to uh parent choice, Glen Hills, we had a hundred and forty-five total out, that includes um about. I totally just told you guys too, roughly forty that were quarantined. Out of that, and then today was a hundred and three out at Glen Hills. Um, so down about forty, and then again out of that hundred and three about forty are quarantining. Parkway was a hundred and three yesterday, down to eighty-two, um, with. Again, about forty kids on quarantine. Granted, that's rough data, when I talked to Kim Hess, she was still going through emails from over the break. Um, because there were a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls and a lot of messages, so that data could change a little bit. Um, because she's still working through all that. Yeah, those are pretty much the, the numbers that I wanted to share, I'm not, we weren't surprised, we're really, really actually very. Happy with how many parents reported cases to us that happened over break. Because that's, that's the information we need in order to, to stay safe, so thank you to all the families that called, left messages, sent Kim emails. Um, so that we would have all that information from students who kind of got it over break.
Can I ask a question, Allison? For the, uh, is, do we have a, how are we dealing with absences for the parent choice that you're speaking of? For families who have chosen to keep their kids home?
Parent calls them in, it's excused, they get ten excused absences a year. We've had a lot of um parents not call, but if they do call and they just tell us. That it's just parent choice, then it's their choice and it'll be excused up to ten.
Sorry, one more attendance question then, for kids. Quarantining or kids who are symptoms or who are staying home for those health reasons. Do those factor into their ten excused absences or sick absences don't count?
Those are extra, we actually have a code Q this year for quarantine, so those don't count it against them at all.
And symptoms or just like for reasons is a Q something? Hi, Tamika.
Apologize for being late, both my child and my husband have tested positive for COVID and I am COVID free, so.
Sorry, Tamika.
So, we'll see how that goes.
Okay, um, should we move on then? To, uh, I guess, uh, so we had one A which is COVID numbers, one B attendance numbers.
Oh, I already went through that.
Yeah, and then uh I'm looking at next one, one C, current status of extracurriculars and clubs and possible action there.
So, right now, we took a pause on all extracurriculars and clubs, part of that is because they're obviously not co-horted when they're after school at clubs. And there are different grade levels, we've got um spectators coming to sports, there are just a lot of variables, so we wanted to take a pause on that. Um, the recommendation from the administrative team would be to look at resuming all clubs and extracurriculars on the eighteenth. So that would be um not having any for the first two weeks after return from break. And then meeting with each per, like, each club obviously has somebody that leads the club. So between now and the eighteenth, we would meet with each club and talk about. What additional mitigation strategies, we talk about as far as like basketball and wrestling. Um, limiting spectators to, to potentially like two per student. Not having students there because that's been an issue with students coming to events and kind of being all over each other. Um, so just seeing where we can tighten things up because. We do recognize that, you know, we're talking about things like Jazz Lab, forensics, ukulele club. Um, athletics, like, these are really important to students with, for their mental health right now. And for their socialization, so we don't want those things to go away. We just need to work as a team to figure out how we can make sure that protocols are being followed strictly at those events. And that we're um just tightening things up.
No, no, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was just gonna say, so if we paused um for the first two weeks, that would give us some time to do some additional planning as well. And work with Nicolay Rec and some of the outside organizations too that come in and use the space.
So, the recommendation right now would be for two weeks and um you've listed uh those clubs, I mean. Would we just be giving you blank authority for, you know, two weeks or, and the other part of it is, I'm not sure, and you know, the board can kind of chime in on this. I don't know if frankly, taking these kind of, I mean, I don't want to say emergency actions, not uh. You know, unplanned, but I don't know what uh the board thought is and whether or not we need to formally act in this. Uh, you know, kind of plan, I, I'm not necessarily inclined to have taken action because it sounds to me like. There's something that's happening with the other districts as well, that there's some discussion. But um, I, I guess what the board thoughts and whether or not we need to, I have no problem endorsing it. I'm just saying, I don't know that uh as a board, we need to endorse it to give uh the administrative team the ability to do it. So just wanted to throw that out.
Well, I, I don't think we have to vote on it, but I, I just wanna make sure that between now and the eighteenth. That those, that everyone, whether it's the coaches for Junior Nights Wrestling or whoever runs an outside club from the rec department. That they are spoken to ahead of the eighteen, so that is, it starts again on the eighteenth because I couldn't agree with you more about the mental health right now. And that's, kids need that outlet and, and that. That downtime with extracurriculars, so I just wanna make sure that that will happen before the eighteen, so they're all up and running by then. And, and knowing that, and knowing that. Obviously can make their own choice to keep their kids out of the clubs if they're concerned about it, you know, as a parent, I would make that choice myself. So, they need to be made aware of that also, that it's their choice to send their kids with the mitigation strategies.
Yeah, what's going on with like basketball and wrestling?
They're, they're paused right now.
Good, okay, so my only question is, why can't they come back like the tenth?
I think that, well, part of it is if you're taking that two weeks after the holiday. Because we're mixing kids from different grade levels and they all just came back from the holiday break and trips and vacations and all that. So part of it's just the two-week timeframe and part of it is really needing to do some planning, because when we talked as a team today. There are things that we had expectations around as far as mitigation strategies, when we talked to all these people at the beginning of the year. That it just aren't consistently being followed through and we need to make sure that that happens.
Because, I mean, so are games gonna have to be canceled and? And what are, what's like Maple?
I don't know what basketball looks like, I think there's one wrestling match, I think there's one YAC.
Because I guess the only reason, I mean, I guess I'd like to see it sooner. And only, I mean, so right, as of right now, the WIAA, I haven't heard of anything. You know, but of course, this is middle school, not WIAA, so it's a little different, but I haven't heard anything of them stopping.
So if we look at timelines too, tomorrow's Wednesday, January sixth, so I need to meet with every single one of these clubs. And come up with a plan and communicate it to families, so it'd be kind of tight to try to do that by Monday.
I mean, could it be something like after you talk to the person, they can start their club whenever they want? So like if you talk to Jazz Lab tomorrow, they could start on Monday if they wanted to, oh, my lights just went out.
I would personally rather be consistent. And I like the fourth, the two weeks. To not have cohorts mixing after school, wanna see what happens with our data and the community spread and all that. To me.
Um, okay, I know I was late, I apologize, I think this is important, so can I get a summary of what you guys are talking about? Because right now, I'm like, my eyes are blocked on this and I don't necessarily know, I might be missing something. So, and I apologize to everybody's on here, but I had to take care of my family, but I also wanna take care of the school. So could you please give me a summary of what you're talking about here?
Right now, we're talking about extra, just extracurricular activities, sports and clubs after school, so during the school day. We wanna talk about mitigation strategies, staffing, like, just being ready in case a classroom or a grade level were to have to transition. But. My, my thought is we would never have to send a whole school virtual, that it's gonna be. You know, it could be a grade level, could be a classroom, but right now, we're just talking about extracurricular activities. And you might have missed the numbers, Tamika, but she went over staffing numbers and current absences for students as well.
Can you just tell me those really?
There were thirteen out, the, well, sorry, go ahead, Allison, you can do it.
Oh, you, staff was thirteen on Monday, ten today with no new cases. Um, students, we had s- um, seven positives at Parkway, nineteen at Glen Hills. We had about forty quarantine in each building. Yesterday at Glen Hills, we had a hundred and forty-five absences because it includes quarantines and families who decided to keep kids home. Um, because of parent choice, today that was down to a hundred and three. And then Parkway was a hundred and three yesterday, down to eighty-two today, including forty quarantines.
Okay, um.
Now you're caught up.
Alright, um. I don't know if this is, and I have no clue because I haven't talked to anybody else, but the one concern that I have. Is with these extracurricular activities, they have to, okay, we have to keep our kids, you know, our. Their mental health is so important. But, with that said. I'd rather have them in school where we're. You know, making sure that we do every precaution. And negating some of the stuff that's gonna happen. In extracurriculars, especially wrestling and basketball where they're one-to-one contact. I mean, I just. I guess I don't get it, why we're even thinking about this, because, and maybe I'm a little bit weirded. Because I have done everything I possibly can to keep myself safe and my family safe and. My husband and my daughter got it, they just tested positive today, I am not positive, I'm not, I'm negative. But I think it's because of the protocols and I'm making sure that I do only the necessities that I need to do. Which is, we need to keep kids in school and it is a necessity that we do that and we keep them. You know, motivated in the school-wise, but other than that, there are some sacrifices. And having kids roll around a mat where they're sweating and spits there and different stuff like that. How are we not protecting our kids on this? So, and I, and, and I understand I might have a not popular opinion on this. But I'd rather my kids be in, the kids be in school and we doing everything we possibly can. To make sure that they're safe and sound in school where most of the staff is going to be at. Then the extracurricular parts, and the second part is. We're barely holding on to these teachers and adding them. You know, adding these teachers to do extracurricular on top of that, even though they wanted to. We can't even give them a day off without taking money from them, so I, I just. That is my opinion on this, I, we're bored, so obviously, we, you know, we talk amongst ourselves, but.
And, and if I can just add, I mean, isn't that really the heart of what, you know, you're getting to, Ms. Weiss? Would, you know, if we take a two-week pause, we're gonna be looking at each of these. And uh, we're gonna be deciding what we can re-transition back into, I mean, I share Ms. Vukovic's opinion about uh wrestling especially. Um, basketball as well, I mean, a lot of running around, uh, you know, in close contact. Um, especially knowing that, you know, standard masks probably aren't cutting the, uh, cutting uh it anymore with respect to, you know. The Omicron variant, so, but I mean, i- as I am kind of formulating this in my mind. I'm hearing that we're gonna put a pause on this for two weeks, you're gonna make some recommendations and. You know, at some point, that's gonna come back to us, and so we have a board meeting in two weeks, so we could either, you know. Uh, take actions aboard then, or you could lift, you know, a moratorium in two weeks. Um, I mean, I guess, uh, those are the options, but in essence, I mean. What you're doing right now is speaking to what Ms. Vukovic is trying to address, right?
Well, part of it too is we've only been back for two days.
Yeah.
So it gives us some time to actually see how this first week goes and see if there's a dramatic change as far as like. What's happening in the schools with transmission, because before this break and before this variant, we weren't ha- we weren't having in-school transmission. So, we need some time to see if that's gonna change to make, see if we need to make any different decisions. So that's part of the reason I want, do wanna pause extracurriculars, to give us some time to see. How things go in the building for the next week or so too.
Are any of these extracurriculars, I mean, I suppose, you know, some of these things, I don't know about forensics, for example, but. Um, some of these things, there could be some virtual components to them too, um, you know, it's not that they would necessarily have to end. I mean, I guess my only thought is, um, you know, to the extent something could still take place virtually. Um, you know, we can find a way, you know, for kids to do that, um, you know, some of these things, I mean, I know it's hard to learn lessons over, you know, the internet. Um, but, you know, if it's ukulele club or if it's chess club or, you know, if it's forensics, you know, maybe there's a way to meet, you know, virtually. And the other thing is that it's not a one-size-fits-all response here, because there may very well be different recommendations. Based on, uh, you know, the risks from different activities, but um, I also suspect that if we take a two-week pause. Given the fact that we've had such, you know, high numbers and also, I think some rational but rampant concern. Um, you know, they'll give us just some time, take us back, there's a lot of information, a lot of things that happened over the break that we're just starting to digest now. And so.
I, I just want to reiterate though, that I, I do think that we need to proceed by. With the goal that extracurriculars do start on the eighteenth, because it has been two weeks. And I think that's the work that needs to be done, because at some point. This might come up again, so to have concrete plans when we have to pause and regroup is important. I am not comfortable saying we need to wipe everything off the table, we need to move forward. Knowing that our goal is to have some extracurriculars and parents can take their kids out if they don't wanna participate. And I understand what you're saying, Tamika, about having kids in school, but part of school is also the extracurricular. That is a- as important to students and their learning, their social emotional growth as the academic part is. So I just wanna make sure that we're moving forward with mitigation strategies, so we can have them back on the eighteenth.
And I meet with Birmingham um athletic director, I told him we would meet after this meeting. So, Andy, I'll take that piece about reaching out to see if some things can be done virtually over the next two weeks, I think that's a really good. Good thought for some of these clubs.
Sure.
They could not have to completely pause.
There's, there's a balance here, and, and I mean, you know, I think both Ms. Vukovic and Ms. Quiteroya could made, you know, very good point here. We have to find the right balance over the next two weeks and uh, you know, it's a time to me like, you know, the administrative plan is to go for two weeks. Um, with, you know, uh, both, you know, finding a way to mitigate and uh reaching out to parents. Uh, but barring that, two weeks, we resume, barring any further board action. Okay, then, uh, if anyone want to make a motion on that. They, they can do that if, if uh, people are satisfied, I mean, I don't think that we need to take a board motion on that, but we can.
Discussion is fine, but I would ask that we have an update at our school board meeting on this topic about. Specifics, you know, how mitigation's being handled, what's moving forward, what's not, et cetera, and sort of understanding this at that. What, what the data showed, because part of what I'm hearing from Allison is, she wants to see the data. So, I wouldn't say, if we're seeing high in-school transmission over the next two weeks, it may not be safe to resume some extracurriculars. And I wanna, I want them to have the space to make those decisions and say those things too, so I just want them to be open, you know, with us about that.
Okay, I'm gonna move on, one D, I know that we're running a little bit long in our space here, um, but one D is learning option, the person are virtual.
Andy, I have a question real quick. Um, our meeting is on the nineteenth, and then we will. That's when we'll discuss opening, doing what we have to do for extracurriculars for the twentieth, correct?
Well, the plan would be to start extracurriculars um on Tuesday, the eighteenth, barring.
Right.
Really bad data, which I would like.
But we haven't discussed it. Cause our meeting's not the nineteenth. Until the nineteen.
You want, this was, I thought this was. Yeah, this is the discussion, Tamika, so if you, it sounds like you're saying you want the board to approve resumption of extracurriculars before they happen? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Tamika, you're on mute, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying to me, um, alright, then. I, we're, we're leaving it, I mean, so we're still on the same page here that we're gonna have that meeting on Wednesday, or do we wanna just have a?
Not on the same page, because Tamika's on a, a slightly different page, so that's.
Yeah, that's, that's right, because she's on mute now, and so I thought she was speaking and then we lost her. Um, alright, well, look, and with the, there's a simple solution to this, which is schedule a special meeting for the Monday, the seventeenth.
Or if Allison, if you could share data with us, like, in a week, if you could share data and in school.
That's fine.
Yeah, I would plan to do that anyways, as I met with clubs, came up with new plans, monitored data, I would share that, so like midweek next week.
I'm okay with that.
I am too, I'd appreciate that communication.
Yep, okay, then, I'm gonna move on to one D. Learning option, in-person or virtual discussion, impossible action, I think we already started to touch on that.
Yeah, um, so basically, like I said, the, the point let yesterday's administrative team meeting was to just. Have plans in place in case there was a need to pivot, because we obviously wanna be planful. And not, um, because these decisions are gonna happen fast, if all of a sudden there's a staffing shortage, we're not gonna know that. Until, you know, perhaps the night before, when we find out how many staff are gonna be out the next day, so we need to have plans in place. Um, in order to make a switch. Um, after talking, we really felt like we were gonna continue. Uh, we would continue the way we've been functioning this year, where we make decisions based on a classroom or perhaps a grade level. It's tough to say that we would have like a certain percentage or threshold, I know that some districts have done that. But it's so situational, because you could have, you know, if you say a percentage of staff, you know, what if it's all fifth grade? You know, you're not gonna shut down an entire school for that, you're gonna send that grade level virtual. You could say there's a percentage of students, but if there's one kid in each class, you're not gonna shut down, you know, and, and do virtual for an entire school. So it's really gotta be a case-by-case, what we've done so far is we've had two times where we've sent a cla- we sent a class virtual once. For a couple days, we sent a grade level virtual once for a couple days. In both cases, what happened is we had a tipping point where the number of students quarantined, combined with any positive cases. Um, was more than half of the class, so at that point, it felt like that was a, that was a point to move that class to virtual instruction. And again, based on quarantine times and when students could return, it, it ended up being for two days. Um, so we don't, I don't anticipate any long closures, even if it was staffing, again, it would be based on when staff could return. It would be based on, um, you know, our principals have been doing. An incredible job working with staff, our staff have supported each other so much. Every single day, they are covering periods for one another, they are covering spaces for one another. Um, and I know it's exhausting, but they've continued to do that, um, and so I think, you know. I've asked the principals, just keep me in the loop, if it gets to a point where you feel like there's a grade level. Or there's a space where it's just not gonna be able to be maintained, then we will come around, have that discussion and talk about length of time. And if we need to send um a classroom or a grade level home for a certain period of time to do virtual. We also talked about, you know, if it were a staffing issue, having individual conversations with staff. Are they um having, are they feeling good, are they asymptomatic? Can they teach from home then and still, and you know, not have to be like completely off if a class is virtual? So there are different um conversations that can happen, which is what makes it so incredibly situational. I, I don't see a situation where we would ever want to send an entire school home. Um, even with this current surge, you listen to, you know. The, the CDC, you listen to DPI, you listen to the Health Department and the recommendation continues to be. The best learning for kids emotionally, socially, academically, is in school, in person. Many of us did some sort of virtual last year and we know that, you know, it might have been novel for the first couple weeks. And then kids just kind of checked out and it just didn't become an ideal learning style. Um, so having kids in front of us in school, even, you know, just for the social pieces, even for staff morale. Having, having kids in the classroom with them in front of them, um, you know, keeps, keeps people going, because, because of that interaction. Again, wanting to just see what the next week brings, because. There's a part of me that feels like the seven hours that they're in school is probably ma- could be the safest part of the day. For all of us, because we're tight, we've got our mitigation me- measures in place, we are monitoring each other, we are keeping kids at a distance. Um, we're doing everything we can during that seven hours to make sure that, that we're not having a lot of spread in the school. New variant, we'll see what the next week brings, but we're tightening, we're planning to tighten things up, looking at lunch hours, looking at transitions.
Allison, I'm sorry, can I pause, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of content, can I pause to just ask a question about something you've already said? You're, so you're talking about shutdowns and going to virtual being situational, like, my question or concern is sort of around. I understand that things may be ad hoc and situational, but does the process of, say, notifying families or making that decision, like, does that have to be? You know, situational or ad hoc, like, do we have a uniform, you know, once we decide it's this many days, this is how you get your technology, this is how we notify. You know, how much notice we give people, so I'm, I'm kind of wondering. How, is that process sort of solidified and do we know that, or is that kind of happening?
So, teachers, teachers are all set up, principals had meeting, staff meetings yesterday, we shared documents with staff. They know what learning platforms they're gonna use, they've got student passwords ready to go. We've assessed technology and we're one-to-one everywhere except for K four. Um, and we would just ask families to give us twenty-four hours. Because I think it's fair to give staff one day to um do the planning and help, help with the switch and help with the transition. And make sure that if kids were at home, perhaps, they can come in and get technology, get materials, get the things that they need in order to switch.
So if a class or grade level goes virtual, they would be out of school for one day, is that right? To, to prep for the virtual, and then those days, are those days we're tracking and then making up? Or how are those days, how is that mislearning, how are we dealing with that?
So, right now, at Parkway, we had to do it twice and we had enough extra minutes and hours and still do. That we don't have to make those up, but if it becomes the case, then we'd have to. But at the moment, because the elementary required minutes are so much, are much less than the middle school, we had ex- we had extra hours and minutes at Parkway.
So I just wanna reiterate this though, because, you know, I think it's important and I think that uh a lot of people came logging on, uh, looking at that item. Two D, thinking that we were talking about going virtual, and, you know, I, I just wanna stress, that's not in the cards right now. The only thing that we're discussing is our preparedness in case it has to be done and how we're gonna approach it, which is gonna be a much more flexible model. That really is targeted towards individual means, we can't predict everything, we can't predict staffing needs, we can't uh predict, uh, you know, what happens with students. Uh, but we're gonna be really a lot more nimble, uh, and a lot more reactive, you know, on the ground than uh. Trying to deal with these things, uh, than we are uh trying to just uh take a brush and say, one-size-fits-all going virtual. That's just not something that we're discussing right now, and that's uh an approach that I'm very comfortable with, because in spite of the numbers which are astounding, frankly. Um, the one other thing that's also changed in times that we've been doing this is that. Um, the one other thing that's also changed in times that we've been doing this is that we have vaccinations. We have uh, you know, boosters. We have uh, you know, students uh, who are now eligible to receive these at a younger age. And I think that those things uh, are also, you know, very helpful. And so I do agree. You know, uh, I mean, we can't look back at what we did and you know, uh, you know, we can't second guess, you know, how we responded the first time around. Um, I think that we did the best that we could with our knowledge, but I, I, I think that while there are some people who are legitimately concerned about, you know, going virtual, I think that going virtual or even having hybrid model just creates great strain and trying to, to do all that in one big swoop is just not something that we wanna do. We wanna be much more individual and, and, and try to uh, you know, uh, deal with things more proactively. Uh, on a case by case uh, basis. So um, I, I just wanted to make sure that we stress that to the people who are here who worry that, you know, the board is gonna take some action in the middle of the day to go virtual. That's not what we're doing. Yeah.
Andy, I think that sums up sort of the administrative recommendation and I understand that, but I also think that there is a faction of our community. The fifty percent of families who are keeping their kids home because they have legitimate concerns about the risk of Omicron. And I wanna make sure that we're not just, that we address those concerns and that that we address those concerns. I wanna make sure that this is not just sort of a one-sided conversation, that things are staying the same because I think we're here to serve our most vulnerable students and for some who are our most vulnerable, they need to be in person. And we know that that's what make, you know, that is what serves them. Some of our most vulnerable students may be at risk by being in person. And so I have a lot of empathy for those for those students and families. And I feel like we need to uh, I, I have asked Allison and, and maybe she can address this sort of why we're not considering having some sort of shortened period of virtual or sync asynchronous or synchronous learning opportunity as other districts are doing. And she's talked to me about it, but I think that that's something that should be talked about openly because people have reached out and it's not just people who don't wanna go virtual. There are students and there are families who have concerns about remaining in person for at least this very short unknown period where, or Omicron is you know, raging and presents very real risks to vaccinated adults and unvaccinated kids and vaccinated kids as well. So I just feel like that's something I'd like to hear be addressed.
So I just wanna address the piece about vulnerable students. We've said since day one that if a family has a specific health condition or a student that's vulnerable that they could contact us. And we've actually worked with a family to provide some alternate options because they did have a medical condition. So that, that still stands. So like, I just wanted to clarify that because we only had one family reach out, but that is definitely something that we offered um, from the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Um, I'm just gonna be honest with you. It's just, it's, it's capacity. We just, we right now are, we're concerned about having enough bodies in classrooms in the building. I don't know how we can add on to that an expectation for staff to do two things at once, which I was in a school last year where staff were charged with doing that. We were in person all year last year and we had about forty percent of our kids who picked virtual. So they livestreamed every single day. And it was, it wasn't sustainable and it just wasn't, it wasn't good instruction for the students in front of them or the students at home. Because it's just, it was just too much and, and that was with subs. That wasn't with the staffing situation that we're in right now. And also with staffing, staff getting it. So we've had a sub shortage all year and now we have staff that are being out because they're getting the virus. And we're barely able to cover classrooms. I, I would have a hard time going to staff and staying to them. So you're doing planning for kids that are quarantined because obviously if you're quarantined, you've had a close contact at our school, we're asking you to stay home. So the teachers every day are getting an email with the students' families that they need to contact, get them the work in Google Classroom, provide activities for. But, and now we want you to also do that for students, for families who chose to stay home. Like that just seems like because the reason we do it for quarantine kids is because we're asking them to stay home because they had a close contact in our school. They require them to stay home. That's the school asking them to stay home versus the parent choosing. And I am not criticizing a parent for keeping their kids home. We've had some situations this year where parents have made choices to keep kids home and I completely respect that. I've had situations in my house where I've made choices to keep kids home. I just don't think our staff has the capacity to add that to their plate.
Yeah, and I under, I think that was, that's just important to say that aloud. I mean, again, I still, I, I know that other districts are doing it. I know they have larger staff, but they have larger student populations. Um, and I definitely don't wanna put more burden on teachers. I just, it's, it's hard to, to, to think that we're not serving this faction of families who have very real fears. So I know, I'm glad you said that vulnerable students. But I don't think we are making accommodations for students who have say like vulnerable family members. Is that accurate? So if you have a student who has a health something health wise that puts them at risk, then we will make accommodations. I think that's important to say out loud and iterate so that people know they can reach out and, and get those accommodations, but it's, it's hard for them to think.
Yes, change because of vaccines, like that particular student was, is now vaccinated. Because we have the vaccine now for five through eleven, so that for that family, that no longer became an issue because their child was able to get vaccinated. Um, and I just wanted to clarify too, as far as just, I know you made a comment that fifty percent of families are out. But it's just doing some quick.
That's not what I, I don't, I'm sorry if I said that. It's not what I meant. Fifty percent of the, the numbers that you told us it was about. You said there were.
Right, but that sounded pretty bad.
No, no, no. Eighty-two, eighty-two students out at Parkway, forty of those are quarantining. Forty-two students, families made a choice or were assuming made a choice to keep their kids home. And at Glen Hills of a hundred and three, forty quarantining mean sixty-three students have families who chose to keep them home for, for some reason. And you can assume some of those are because they have a, a fear of Omicron. That's what I, to clarify, that's what was referenced.
Um, cause we're at eighteen percent at Parkway and twenty percent at Glen Hills, including quarantined students. Yeah, sorry.
I just, this is just one of those things where this is a lose-lose situation all around. Parents are concerned about their kids. They want their kids to get an education. They want social, emotional growth. They want them to not to experience all the things that they're supposed to in middle school and all that. Then we have, and so that's what the parents, the kids wanna be here. They wanna be involved. They wanna go to school. But then we also have the teachers who wanna be here, but they're burnt out. They're, they're tired and every single time it looks like we're putting a little bit more on them, even though they're actually doing the work. And you know, and trying and struggling. There has to be, and so as much as I, I do appreciate us helping people who need, definitely need virtual learning, like have to be out. But I think for the, for me, um, like, school is important. Like I said, I think if we're gonna choose something and I'll, I'll say it again, I would bump extracurriculars for anything else as they are in school. I know that's a combination of both, but it's hard to do when every, every parent is advocating for their one child. And their one child may have a different need than anybody else. And so I guess the way I'm going to try to take this and what is the best for the majority of the children? What is the best for the majority of the teachers? What is the best for majority, majority of the district? Because we cannot look at it individual cases. Now you can, as a board. Now you can, I think, uh, Ms. Weiss, you can look at individual cases and, and figure out what needs to be done individually. And you, I think you have done that when it comes to closing classrooms or um, you know, having one class go virtual. But I don't think it's a all or nothing thing for a district. Um, so I, I just wanna es- especially the, the people that are on this, this call. These are hard choices that we have to make, but I think if we keep in what's best for the district. And we can't necessarily look at individual people unless that is called for. And I mean with, you know, special needs or there are circumstances, then we need to do everything we can. But then parents have choices too, and they can make those choices. And I welcome them to make those choices for their family. But just because they have to make those choices, doesn't necessarily that the school or the school district have to make those choices because they did. Um, if they want their kids to stay at home. I understand that. I'm concerned right now about sending my kid back to college in a couple of weeks. Because it's gone, you know, so viral, but I wouldn't expect the whole school to decide, you know, to shut down just because I'm worried about my kid. Um, so that's just my, uh, what do you call it? Um, two cents. Completely uh, editorial, but um, I just wanted you guys to know where I was coming from and how I would look at it.
Okay, then.
Gonna say, I understand it too, Danielle. And like, I wish we could do it all for everybody. And I know that they have more kids, but when you have more staff, you have more pairs, you have more coaches, you have more people that don't have classrooms that can step in and help plan and do some of those other things. I know one of the districts we were talking about, um, the, the communication went out that literally they're like just setting a device in the classroom. So people can listen. I mean, that's not real great. You know what I mean? That's not.
Right. But that's, that's a choice though, that you could offer families who say, okay, for two weeks, I'm gonna say this level of education's okay because the safety of my families is important, right? Versus.
Right. And the other, yeah, the other piece is they're doing it for like nine days. So now we're on Wednesday tomorrow. And so like by the time you know what I mean? Some of it is, and it's, I'm not, I don't think for one second that our teachers aren't gonna work with people and work with kids and be understanding and like just hold them accountable for the most important things. And you know what I mean? I don't think they're gonna come back and have like this, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Everybody understands and they're gonna like work with these kids and these families to make sure that they're they're caught up and that they're where they need to be if they choose to stay out for this week.
Yeah, I know. I'm just worried that ten days is gonna bump up. Like if, if parents or families or, you know, other districts seem to be saying about two weeks, they're trying to sort of pause or give folks options and well, that would be the ten days, right, of excused absences for families if they were gonna go that route. So that could get tricky for some people.
And I know our partner schools had the same thought. Maybe it's size too. That they just couldn't maintain it with what's happening with staff and stuff right now.
No, I just, I just wanted to address that. I appreciate the considerations you've given. I know you've discussed it with staff and yeah, yeah, uh, so, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, do, do we have the resources to like put out a job posting for building subs?
We have two building subs in each building.
Okay. Well, I mean, like.
Sure.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. Do we have the resources to get more? Because there's a lot of uh, people who just graduated, cause a lot of people do their uh, the four and a half year uh, thing in college. So there might be a lot of new teachers looking for a job. Like, do we have the resources for that? Is that impossible?
No, we hope there are people because we've been looking all year and we haven't been. Like we've been reaching out to colleges, asking about who's graduating, asking about who's student teaching, like really proactively. So yes, it's posted.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, could we post it as like building sub? Because because if it's just as a sub, then you only get paid for sobbing. But if you're building subs, it's every day, right? So we do have the resources.
Yeah, that's why I would change it to building subs because it was a little bit more alluring.
Okay.
Yeah, and a more permanent position.
And have it posted.
Yeah.
On weekend as well as on the website as a building sub.
And can, do you guys keep on updating it just so it's at the top?
Uh, yep. And then um, we also take it down and then put it back up. So it shows up with a new posting.
Okay, thanks. That's all I was wondering.
So maybe Ben, I mean, maybe like you said, if this transition, there will be some people.
Yeah, a lot of people just graduated. So maybe.
Okay.
Um, I didn't mean to sidetrack everything, but I know Allison, you also were gonna talk about the CDC guidelines and sort of our quarantine and testing to stay, which a lot of people have been asking about. So.
Is that under two?
Three, you already asked. It was timeline. It's on there though, but you read my mind because transition timeline was the whole twenty-four hour piece that you asked about. Um, I could fly through some of these if you want, Andy. They're just.
Yeah, two E and two F. Uh, I mean, well, at least two E, yeah, it's kind of pulled into that. So there's no other motion specifically under two D or any other action or comment.
No, she, there's technologies to schedule lunches. I'd like to hear about those things.
Yeah, I can just fly through that. Those were just some of the things that, that the principals and teachers um, and Jenica plant, were put into planning mode yesterday, just in case. So the technology, I spoke to it a little bit before, but we talked with Keith. Um, we've got one to one for every grade level except for K four, working with Jenica on that as far as iPads. Um, and again, since it would most likely be one classroom or one grade level, we could always make that happen and use some of the devices, because everybody wouldn't need one at the same time. Um, getting passwords updated, making sure that we've got Zoom accounts um, with enough capacity. Student schedules are prepared, but most likely would, again, wouldn't be needed because the only time the schedule would change is if the whole school went virtual. Because if a grade level went virtual, they'd have to follow the school schedule because of allied arts still happening in the building. Um, so that would keep the schedule the same. Uh, lunch, we, one of the things that Airmark provides, and we just wanted to reiterate that, this to make sure everybody knows is that if you are out on quarantine, you can come in on Monday and pick up lunches for the week. So that's something that they provide. And so then if there were a classroom or a grade level that went home on quarantine, same thing, like families could come and pick up lunches for the week. So that's something they provided. We've also started already looking at our lunchroom procedures. Um, and so that's kind of in the mitigation pieces, but that's another mention. Virtual teaching, if there were, if a class or a grade level had to go quarantine, the teachers would come to school and do their virtual teaching in their classroom. So they have technology and resources and everything. Um, and then support staff and custodial, we just, we're talking about you know, is there additional cleaning that needs to happen if a grade level or, or, or classroom goes? Um, and then can we reass, we would reassign support staff. So if there were support staff that were assigned to that grade level or classroom, once they go virtual, we would reassign them for different areas. So those are just all things we were kind of like walking through yesterday so that we make sure that we have some plans around that. In the event that we would have to do um, a classroom or a grade level virtual. So that was the rest of that piece.
Okay. Is there anything else on uh, two D? All right, then I'm going to have to move on to E formally.
So the, this will address some of what you were talking about, Danielle. So the first piece is just mitigation strategies. And I think we've talked about it the whole meeting. So I don't know how much depth I need to go into, but each building has come up with different areas where they can tighten things up. Um, lunchroom has been a concern all year. So the middle school has worked on bringing up extra tables. They've changed um, how students are getting lunches. So they're getting them in disposables so that they get to their table. They eat their lunch. They're not moving around. They're not go, like transitioning in the lunchroom. So that helps with contact tracing and it also just helps with student movement around the lunchroom. Because obviously that's the time that they're taking their masks down to eat. Parkway has transitioned back to lunchroom, lunch in classrooms, which again cohorts our students so that they're only with that, their class. And in the classroom, they're using floor space, table space, desk space to spread kids out for lunch in the classroom. So those two things are, have already started to happen this week. We've talked about you know, transitions. I know Parkway's looking at dismissal, like just really having conversations around the fact that we know that this variant is more contagious. So how can we tighten things up even more in the building with mitigation strategies? Um, so working with staff through that. I don't know if you have any questions on that part. Otherwise I can go to the CDC piece.
Uh, does every, does every classroom have a, like an air purifier? Am I remembering every classroom?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're gonna be doing um, at Parkway because they're eating in class, like they're gonna midday go in and spray with the, um, what is it called Lindsay? It's like not an ionizer. What is it called?
Like the UV something or?
I see Jim there.
That's the, that's the Clorox sprayer, that, the disinfectant.
Oh.
Which, which.
Which, which we've been doing anyway, even now, we've been doing it every day.
I know.
They do it in, they do it in the evening too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, updated CDC guidelines is your next bullet point, Allison.
All right, so. So when we were over how the holiday break, the CDC updated a couple of things. Um, well, one was right before holiday break, and that was test to stay. So the district nurse and I, along with our Novir testing company rep, actually have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Because we scheduled this before the break to talk about test to stay. With test to stay, what happens is students who are close contacts. Would inst, in place, they, parents could choose this, so they would not have to do this. Obviously, it's choice. But instead of quarantining, they have the option to be at school, test on day one, three, five, and seven. So part of our meeting tomorrow with Novir is to see if they have the capacity. Because we all know that testing has been an issue over the last week and testing supplies, so far, they've been good. With our daily testing yesterday and today, but we want to make sure they would have the capacity to do tests to stay. So that's one piece. Then the other bigger piece potentially is that everybody knows that the CDC came out with guidance. To shorten quarantine to five days. Um, the tricky piece is that the Department of Public Instruction, along with the North Shore Health Department, have told. Area schools to wait to continue the ten-day quarantine. Because they are thinking that the CDC is gonna come out with K twelve specific guidance. So they don't want us to move to the five day at this point in time, although it's really unfortunate and confusing for us. Because they've moved to the five day for adults in the community. And they're now following the new five day, but then if a family comes in with a child, they're telling the child. Well, we're recommending to schools to continue with the ten day. We do meet with the health department every two weeks. We met with them over breaks, so we'll be meeting with them next week. So we hope some, for some more information on that, but that has an impact on tests to stay. Because if we move to a five-day quarantine, then it would be, you can quarantine for five days, or you can come in and test on one, three, and five. And we also know that the CDC is considering, or I don't know if they actually did this change. They had said, we recommend testing on day five to return from your quarantine. I don't know if they moved to you have to test. On day five to come back from your quarantine, but that's another piece that was in flux. So basically, the Department of Instruction and our local health departments just kind of told schools, stand tight with what you're doing now. One of the questions I have for the health department, which would help with staffing is, should we be standing tight with our quarantine process for staff and students? Or should we be moving to the five day for staff? So that's just another conversation that we need clarification, uh, from the local health department. So both of those are things we want to implement because obviously it would reduce the number of kids at home, reduce quarantine. And because we haven't seen the situation where kids go home and quarantine and then become positive. We would be optimistic that that would be a good, you know, that we would be okay having kids come back and do tests to stay. Oh, I'm sorry. The other piece that complicates things is the new. The idea around what is fully vaccinated now, because part of that guidance is. If you've had two doses less than six months ago of Pfizer Moderna, if you'd have, if you'd had Johnson and Johnson less than two months ago. Or if you've had a booster more than two weeks ago, then you're, you know, so there's all these moving parts. So, um, that's part of the planning for Kim and I, because if we, if all of that guidance comes into place, so the CDC says, yep, this is all the new guidance for schools. Then we're gonna have to be tracking every single case to look at dates. Of when, because right now we say to a student, you're fully vaccinated, you can come back, you don't have to quarantine. That would change if they've been vaccinated more than six months ago and they don't have a booster. Then they would suddenly be in a quarantine category and same with staff. So there's just a lot of things, moving parts that can complicate them.
Do you have an, an idea of how much of our staff is boosted? Because I know we had an idea of how many were vaccinated, but.
Yeah, I don't.
Do you have any thoughts or feelings about requiring vaccination of staff? Has that changed? I know you've been asked before.
Yeah, I, we were at, oh, like well over ninety percent, so it just didn't feel like something. You know, that was a necessary move, but I, I know there's continued conversations around that. I know that Andy's brought it up.
Well, ninety percent, it was ninety percent of people who reported. We didn't actually have a total number of how much of our staff, right? We don't actually have a, uh, okay, yeah.
It may be a good idea to do another survey, uh, and both families and staff, um. You know, obviously we're worried about spread among students, you know, we'd like to know, uh, and have a greater idea how many students are, uh. Are vaccinated as well. Um, you know, it, it's just another data point, and so it might be, you know, uh. An opportunity to go out and just send out another survey and see what kind of response we get.
Yep.
I have a testing question. It, it's just real specific, but I think, uh, the Novir testing only happens in the morning, so. Um, a, a parent reached out and asked about testing PMK four. Um, classes, I know it would be a small faction, but do we have some way for. Those students to access the testing or no?
I mean, we don't have a separate time. They can always bring their kid, but we don't have like a separate, you know what I mean, specific time. It was, uh, Novir had to plan with like so many schools. We didn't get our ideals. You know, we didn't even get our first choice. Everybody wanted first thing in the morning, right? Like, so that it'd be like kids come in and get tested right away. Um, but they, but, um, s, um, kids, siblings and household members can come in. And they're, they can get tested. Uh, at any time, like that the testers are there.
Oh, could we publicize that information on our COVID page a little bit more prominently?
Sure.
Before they run out of tests.
I don't, do we wanna? No, I'm just kidding. Yeah.
We do, we do. Okay, that's good to know.
Um, siblings over three, obviously, three years or older.
Cut out there.
Just to summarize that, I know I had some families reach out about tests to stay in the new guidance, and it's, it is something that we want to get in place. We're just waiting for the go-ahead from DPI and the local health department.
Okay.
Oh, no, 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 sorry. That was more, I didn't understand that from our earlier conversation. So it's something you want to do, you just are kind of. And it's in flux. Some, so many things are in flux.
Okay, and part, the local health department in all honesty said to us, you know, we've put things out and made these huge recommendations and then. A week later, we get new information, so we just kind of want to hang tight because since the CDC did have specific K twelve guidance. For mitigation and for COVID, they think that could happen again for this.
Anything else on, uh, that number two, um?
Oh, masks. I'm curious. I, I think what, it seems to be fairly well accepted that like cloth mat, that cloth mats are not. Uh, do we, are we coming out with any recommendations or requirements for mask wearing, updating any of that?
I don't know. I don't, I, I don't, not sure if we can require, but we did. That was one of the things we talked about with updated mitigation strategies, was like a strong recommendation. To not have cloth masks. It's easier to say that with staff, you know what I mean, than perhaps students, but. That's definitely a strong recommendation.
Do we have a supply of masks that we can offer to students in lieu of, so that it's not a economic burden?
Yeah, when students come in, um, and they check in, there's always masks there if they need them, yeah.
I've seen that actually too, um, everyone's very prepared when kids are walking in with a spare set of masks. It's good to see, actually. It's unfortunate that some people don't have masks when they come into the building, but, you know, I, I witnessed that we've had them handy at the doors. On entry. Okay, so, um, moving on then, if there's nothing on, uh, that second sub-point, there's also the third sub-point, which was. Any additions or revisiting twenty-one handbook?
So not really so much a new piece, but that's one of the things that we were doing as we go through and figure out where we can tighten up. Are there things that were in place last year that we did not have in place this year that we want to bring back? So for example, eating lunch in classrooms was one of them. So that was just using that resource from last year.
Okay. Right, so I don't want to rush, uh, but does anyone have any further questions on, uh, that point? Because if not, we go on to up with your school board format. Okay, let's go on to two up, uh, school board format.
So we've asked, um, staff to do all their meetings virtual for the time being. Um, even concluding like our cabinet meeting was virtual, um. Our leadership team meeting will be virtual. There were two staff meetings held yesterday virtually. So I just thought it was something just to circle back, just to see how you guys are feeling about board meetings. I know we literally just came to us, like it took us months to get to a space where we're back in person. But I just wanted to circle back to that. Um, I don't have like a, I'm good either way. I just thought it was something to bring up so that the board could talk about it.
Molly's not here, right? Cause she's.
Yeah, she had to step out, but I'm sure she would advocate, uh, that we're held to the same standard. Uh, you know, as everyone else, and, uh, I appreciate having non-central meetings. Uh, I shouldn't say non-central meeting, but you know, certainly, uh, you know, administrative meetings, uh, be. You know, curtailed and conducted virtually when possible. I think that when it comes to board meetings, um. We, we're still having in-person, you know, school, that's still our commitment, and I still think that we have to honor that. Uh, for the time being, and as we've done it, we've made it possible, uh, to have virtual, uh, participation. Um, so that seems to be working. Um. Obviously, to the extent that someone might not be able to make it, who's on the board, uh, in person. Uh, you know, I assume flexibility, but I think our default has to, uh, be, you know, back in the building for those meetings.
But do we want to consider like public attendance? Like, and I, I'm, I'm all for being in person. And I know we're asking staff to be with students, so I don't have a, a, an opinion just yet. But I also have this feeling that sort of holding large gatherings is not the most responsible when Omicron is surge, uh, so.
My, here's my suggestion. We have our open me, are we still, we do it in person. We s- set up a laptop. I mean, I know it's, it's a virtual, but we also have a laptop open so people can. It's like, it's still public. And we'll still be in person. But, um, so people can still participate. And ask questions and do stuff, and well, maybe we can try to spread it out over the whole library. But I think most of the people that are gonna show up or do come to these meetings, either know that they can do it virtually. And unless they have something they really want to say in front of us, they can choose to do it virtually. So I don't even think. I think just be aware, I'm just saying, be aware, people who are coming to this meeting, we're trying to be in person because we are asking. Our kids to come in person and our staff to come in person, so we should be there. But also understand that, like if we had this meeting at the school, there's no way we could add a hundred and sixty-seven people in the, in the room.
Right.
So, um, just be aware of that, I guess, that's all.
If I can just jump in for one second, Allison, not to, not to step on anybody over anybody, but. If, if we notice that we had a large group showing up at a school board meeting, we could pivot very quickly to the cafeteria and spread. A hundred and fifty people out in there and still be spaced. So. If that was the case, that we know we are gonna have a large group of people or people showed up. We certainly could pivot quickly with a little bit of change in, in logistics and get. People into the cafeteria and space them out appropriately.
Hey Jim, I do have one question on that. Can, with that being said, can we, um, move. The equipment so we're on virtual to, to the cafeteria as well?
It would take a little longer, but I would guess we could because we're just using a laptop and a camp and a data camera, so. I would guess we could, and Jenica's shaking her head yes, so if that was the case. I think we, we could make it happen. It may, it may take a few minutes, but you know, the miraculous does take a few minutes longer, so.
But here's my question, why don't we just do that now?
Yeah.
Move those to the lot, to the, that move to that area now.
We could.
We're not three feet apart at our last meeting.
Right, and then no matter what, we still have, we're all set and sound and ready to go, and we wouldn't have to. Move it to a point. Does that, now Jim, how does that work for you and logistics part of it?
That's not a problem. It can be set up. That was, that was a Back to the Future to Mika because our school board meetings. When I was on the school board, were in the commons and that's where we, that's where we had them every ti, every, every month was in the.
I didn't know Moses was in school.
Well, we used to have the stone tablets. We didn't have technology then, but we did distribute them. Um, you know, they're a little heavier to carry. Um, you know, and not as many people took them home because they.
I love you. You just rolled right with it. You just rolled right with it.
There were three tablets, but we lost one somewhere, so.
But does that work that we just have our meetings?
I will work with, I will work with Jenica and Allison and Lindsay. We'll, we'll set it up and we certainly can make that happen. We can, we'll set the tables up accordingly. Um, many school districts, as I travel around the state and look at buildings, they've been holding them in cafeterias with the board spread apart. With the audience spread apart, and it still works out. And it certainly, we have the space there. I mean, that's a large area, so yes.
Yeah.
There, settle.
Thank you for listening.
Okay. So, um, I mean, I guess then at, at this point, then I, I would say, you know, no action, but, uh, you know, we'll. I, I guess, confer a little bit further than with Jim on that, uh, if we, uh, we do decide, or if we do need to make those changes. Um, but I don't think that we need to take any, you know, action at this point on that. And I actually, as I look at it, it was just a discussion, so. Um, there's not much more that we can do other than to communicate that it could be an issue going forward. But right now, uh, nothing's gonna change, so.
And then just remember that we're still having committee meetings, so the committee meetings stay virtual, but these, this, our school board meetings will.
We'll just move to the comments.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, well then, our, our last item is virtual, is visitor participation. Um, I, you know, we did lose another member, so we barely have a quorum here. Um, I know that both members are gonna go back and, uh, watch the video. But, um, we have a number of people here and, uh, I. Want to open this up to visitor participation, but I also want to add, um, if. There is anyone who want to make a motion regarding the format or structure of visitor participation, that they can make that motion now. In accordance with our policy.
I'm not sure what you're asking for, Andy.
Uh, in, in terms of, uh, a time limit or, uh, for visitor participation?
Oh, I'm not gonna make that motion, because I tried to steer this last meeting to down. And you guys, I, so I am never gonna make that motion until we get it fully on the. Talk for five, two.
You have, you have visitor participation is for agenda or non-agenda items, which is.
We, we opened it up, yes.
Talk about the timeframe, so you.
Yeah, normally three minutes?
Uh, yeah, it, uh, uh, well, I've made it two minutes, uh, uh, most commonly, uh, not three minutes, but so, uh. If we're okay with.
Let's.
If we're, yeah, it's over, we're okay going with standard, you know, two minutes per person and no time limit, um, you know, my only, uh, point was I. Uh, had, uh, noticed the, uh, large number of people here and the fact that we didn't have action.
Sure, and I guess that we, we've said this before, but if, you know, if you are sort of echoing what someone else has already said. That could be a succinct comment, right? You'd agree with that person, but let's, you know, we, we all have our, our reasoning here, so let's.
Great, then we're gonna go forward as a standard, and, uh, I see that we're collecting a couple of hands here. So, uh, I'm going to start with, uh. It says, uh, Hinchi is, uh, the first hand that I had. I guess that might be Mommy Hinchi. If you could just state your name and address, uh, for the record before starting and then, uh. If you could just state your name and address, uh, for the record before starting and then, uh, two minutes, please.
Um, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
She, uh, twenty-one forty West Raleigh Avenue. Um, most of you know this, but I'm currently the president of the PTO and I sent out a post on Facebook just asking for parent comment. And I thought, um, basically because I promised the parents that I would tell you what they said. Um, everyone who reached out to me does not want virtual schooling and I am extremely happy that I am going to be able to go back to them. Um, and, and tell you that that, and I'm quoting, is not in the cards right now. So, um, I just want to say, say thank you and that as far as people who personally reached out to me after I asked for feedback, um, I think everyone's fears will be, you know, um, put to rest. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And, uh, our next person, Lisa, uh, Carnegie?
Yes. Thank you. Lisa Carnegie, two, one, four, zero, West Skyline Road, Glendale, Hudson. Um, I have just a question about, um, something that was said earlier, I believe by, uh, Ms. Weiss. When you were talking about, you know, kind of the moving pieces when classes need to go virtual, that, um, you know, at one point, you know, if there were fifty percent more of the students out, it made sense obviously to go virtual. So I'm just wondering if there is hard and fast criteria on that? And then if and how that criteria is shared. So is it fifty percent of the students always? Is it? You know, what, what that criteria looks like and then how that is, um, communicated to, to parents?
Um, so I just say that it, it's happened twice and it was communicated specifically to those parents. So we, that's something we can definitely make sure we share broader, more broadly. And that has been, in the two times it's happened, we use that as a tipping point. So yes, I would say that if it's more than fifty percent of students are home due to close contact or having COVID, that we would transition that class to virtual. And I can, I can put that in a communication.
Maybe that's something to add to the dashboard even. I know you won't have to update it hopefully very, I mean, hopefully very often, but.
Well, I was thinking the piece about cloth masks, like there are some things that we can put together. You know, the testing piece that family members can come. So, yeah.
Okay, um, our next, uh, one, I'm very sorry. I'm going to butcher your last name. Uh, so I'm just gonna spell out T W R O L, uh, S T A D, that Trollstead?
Yes, Ross, got it. You got it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a question. Just first off, thank you guys so mu- oh, do I need to say my address? Apologize. Two, four, zero, zero, West Daphne, um, Road. Um, just thank you guys so much for this meeting. Um, a lot of the questions that I had um, were answered and some of the concerns that I had were, um, talked about in address. So, um, I appreciate that. I just have an, um, an additional question, a follow-up of staff coverage. Um, I know that staffing is an issue, um, everywhere. Um, and so I'm wondering, um, if staffing becomes an issue and there's, there's this talk of a staffing is an issue, we're gonna need to close down a classroom or close down a grade level or a specific, um, you know, wha- whatever that is. Um, I'm wondering what strategies you guys are using to cover classrooms with other certified staff? I know that I have heard that administration at Parkway is covering classrooms, which and, and, and also interventionist. Um, I, I've heard that then, and I heard Mrs. Weiss talk about how at the other schools, teachers are covering classroom periods and stuff, which I think is awesome. Um, and maybe this is happening and maybe it's not, I'm not sure, but are any of our district leaders at, um, the district office, um, have a plan for coverage? For an example, in the school district that I am working in, all of our district leaders, um, are, have a certain day that they are on call. And then if there is a staff shortage and it is last case, you know, scenario based on whatever the need is or whatever in the building, they are coming in and subbing. That includes our super superintendent. Um, I'm not, I don't, I'm not, I don't want to offend anybody by this and I don't want to, um, assume that things haven't been talked about. Every district is different. I get it. But, um, has that been discussed and is there a plan in place and could that be an option? Before shutting down a classroom or before, um, sending, um, a grade level or whatnot to, um, virtual? Um, because of staff shortage.
Um, so I would just say we use, you know, support staff, coaches, everybody that we can use to help cover. We don't have a plan in place for that, but it has happened. So it's just kind of day by day. Every morning we get that email from the two secretaries and it shows who's covered by who and who might not be covered. Um, so I know that like our teaching and director of teaching and learning has gone in and subbed. Um, Lindsay, our business manager has gone in and subbed. Um, I haven't subbed in a classroom, but if principals are subbing, I try to be on call in the office of the school so that there's like another administrative backup. If the principals are super busy subbing in classrooms, we haven't gotten to that point yet. But obviously if we could step into a classroom and help, we're not gonna send kids home. Like that's not gonna be the first option if we at district office can support. Like if that, if it's so close that you just need like one or two people and we can support that from district office, we would obviously make that choice before we would send kids home virtually.
Yeah, no, thank you. I, I assumed, but, um, hadn't heard of that. So I think it's just nice to hear that all of those measures are taking place and really thinking outside of the box as I know you guys are. Um.
Yeah, we had our business manager in an art room, so.
We have, uh, yeah, crazy technology assistant superintendent of, um, technology and communications in a fifth grade room the other day. So yeah, I just, I just wanted to see if that was, if there was something in place with that. Um, so thank you for, for sharing.
Uh, I think next person on our list is Jordan Warner.
Oh, hi, uh, Jordan Warner, eight hundred West Clover and Acclaim. Uh, I have a question about, um, the new symptoms that, that are the CDC, uh, has added to the list. Um, when I was subbing before, uh, the Christmas break, um, I noticed the classroom that I was in had a number of children that were, uh, outwardly, you know, draining noses and sneezing and things. Uh, and that was before I was aware of the symptoms that were problematic. I'm subbing on Friday at Parkway, um, and I'm just wondering what is the protocol, uh, for if, if the child is uh, exhibiting, uh, symptoms like that? Should I send them to the, to the nurse's office or, or how is that handled?
So Kim has actually just sent out a communication this week to all staff with the updated symptoms and guidelines on when to send kids, kids to the nurse's office. But I think what you bring up is a really good point to make sure that that communication is maybe printed off somewhere so that if there's a sub in the classroom, they have access to that too, because while all the classroom teachers now got updated protocol, that might not be, you know, available for subs. So I think that's a really good point to make sure maybe they stick that in their sub folder. Just so that we help with that too.
Yep, indeed. Thank you very much.
Okay. And then I know I saw another name up here, Sean Frisky, if I pronounced your name right?
Yep, Sean Frisky, five, six, nine, nine, North Center Parkway. I just wanted to talk about what we talked about in the beginning, the extracurriculars. And talk about, that's why some of us got our kids vaccinated. Like COVID's not new. So parents need to be able to kind of make a personal choice. We're not talking about school here. We're talking about extracurriculars. No one's being forced to go to these. I don't think the school board should really be making a decision to shut these down. I really think this should be a parent's choice. You know, if your kid's vaccinated, maybe you can put that as a requirement. But we, we need to keep these kids around each other and having fun and not just going to school, coming home, going to school, coming home. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Our next one is, uh, Melissa Campbell.
Hello, my name is Melissa Campbell, sixty-five, sixty-three North River Road, Glendale. Um, I apologize in advance if this was covered in the meeting before I could attend, but I was just wanting to get a better understanding about the measures being taken by principals and the board and the superintendent or the district staff about, um, like resilience measures for teachers. I know it was brought up that teachers are really encouraged not to have cloth masks and also, um, you know, purchasing masks for students or having student masks available for students for academic hardship. But I was wondering if teachers are up, are supplied with any of those additional supplies? Cause those KN ninety-fives are difficult to come by and not, not cheap. And so I was just wondering what the conversation around that has been. Um, are PD days being turned into workdays, extra planning? I just want to know about that because my little girl in the classroom, I want her with a really, you know, happy and supported teacher. So.
Um, as far as masks, like that was kind of a conversation we just had today about just recommending non-cloth masks. We weren't, I don't think gonna go as far as saying they had to be KN ninety-five masks. I know that the medical masks have been, um, the paper masks, you know, the medical ones were, were recommended as well. Of course, if a staff member had a hardship, they could always reach out to us. You know what I mean? And we would work with them around that. We're not gonna, we're gonna make sure everybody has what they need when it comes to masks. Um, the, the piece about resiliency, um, I don't know if this is a good or a bad thing to share, but, um, the, when we came back from break, the first email that I sent to all staff, I said, you know, I hope that you had time to recharge. I hope you had time to relax. Recognizing that things are ramping up, just keep in mind that we have two asynchronous days and we have Martin Luther King Day. And so we've got a couple of long weekends and I, a- and that that might sound horrible, but like you said, just kind of trying to keep us in that frame of mind that like there's another little reprieve, prevee coming up where we can breathe. And then there's another one where we can stop and breathe. Um, so that was the intent of those asynchronous days to be able to provide some, um, project-based learning or some extensive, extensions for students while giving staff a little bit less stress on those days. Um, so that's why those were put into place. And so what we did is it's like every four weeks, there's another space, um, for staff for the rest of the year. Um, but yeah, that is constantly on our minds. Um, how, how we can make sure, because you're right, good teachers are good, good people that feel good are gonna be good for students. So it is something that's constantly, I know the principals are always, always trying to keep a pulse on students and, or staff and how staff are feeling and how they're managing. And there's a lot of these things we talked about today. It was, okay, principals, how do you think the staff would? What do you think this would do? Do you think they can handle this? Do you think this would be too much? Do you think, just always trying to be aware of that? Cause it is, it, it is a lot for staff.
Um, Allison, I just wanted to add, um, to your point that we, we, I know she and I both received several emails from staff just expressing their gratitude for those two asynchronous days. And just other things like the WAC membership, because they've said that it's been a really great outlet for their own mental health. So we've gotten some great feedback with some of the changes that we've made.
To, sorry, to Melissa's point, do we provide masks? I've, I feel like a while back, we talked about supplies and things that, you know, when we, when we were re-entering the school and we were providing some of those things. Are we not able to or able to provide the KN ninety-five or masks for, you know, staff, not just ones experiencing hardship?
Maybe that's part of our
We have KN ninety-five for staff.
Okay, okay.
They're in the nurse's office or in the health office.
Okay. I haven't liked, I've seen most staff with good masks, so I haven't really thought about it, but that's good to know, Jim.
Wow, just one last thing to think about worry. Are you buying a fake one on Amazon, right? Like, you know?
It might be a good idea to add, uh, to Thursday folder, um, just, uh, the recommendation with respect to, uh, um, using better masks than cloth mask. Um, you know, the KN ninety-five, um, or, or anything else that's in better performance. Um, just to stick something out this week, cause it would be timely.
Yep.
Um, we have Carla Pennington Cross.
Hi there, can you hear me? Okay, I'm, I'm Carla Pennington Cross, nine oh nine West Acacia Road, Glendale, uh, five through two one seven. I wanted to, um, speak to a, a little more to the, uh, wonderful question raised by the parent about teacher resiliency. Um, I don't know if, um, it's been disseminated yet, but the, um, school, so the district social worker Denise Davis and I have been working to put together a compassion resilience or compassion burnout, um, work group. Like a learning and support group of teachers and caregivers. Um, we have the support of a pro bono facilitator from the Roger, Rogers, uh, like outreach group. They're associated with WISE, which is the Wisconsin, uh, Initiative for Stigma Elimination. And we're trying to put together a work group, um, that would meet through the spring um, to help people grow that sort of resilience and, um, you know, sort of, uh, ability to cope with challenges and change um, as we face this difficult world. So with this nice audience here, I, I would ask people, if you're interested in that kind of support and growth, to please keep your eyes open. Denise is working on a survey to send out to folks to see who might be interested. Um, we recorded sort of a informational video. I'll try to remember to post that up on the parent pages. And, um, I've been through the training myself and worked to, um, kind of finalize the materials. It's just this fantastic, uh, training opportunity and growth opportunity for us. So hopefully that's also the kind of community-based support that we can offer to teachers and families as we, uh, muddle through this. And I, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's thinking about the mental health of our kids and our families and our staff. Um, we, we really as a village need to stick, stick together and, uh, help each other stay in one piece as, as we work our way through this.
Carla, thank you for bringing that up. Um, and I'm sorry, I forgot it. Denise did send it out in the Thursday folder, but I'll make sure that it goes out again this week.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here? Um, I, I see two hands up. Um, people have already spoken and, uh, it's been our practice that we'll allow it, uh, briefly, uh, if there's no one else. So, um, before I, uh, call those two names again, is there anyone else who has? Uh, a comment. Okay, um, Kate Cantrell.
Hi there. Um, yeah, this is Kate Cantrell, uh, fifty-four, twenty-one, North Shasta. I have Caleb and Wyatt and I see a lot of familiar faces. Honestly, I just, this is my first meeting that I have zoomed into and I just wanted to say thank you. You guys have been great. Like honestly, like listening, I feel so sorry for the teachers. I feel sorry for the parents. Don't get me wrong. I feel, I feel sorry for both of us because it's soup, super hard. Um, but I just wanted to say thanks and this has been a learning experience for me. And I appreciate you all, uh, parents and teachers.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'll give everyone else, uh, another moment, um, but, uh, it looks like there's no one else. So I just had very briefly, uh, Ms. Trollstead, uh, if you had just a quick follow-up.
Yes, I apologize. Um, I meant to say it, ask the question and it relates to my other question that I ask about, um, coverage. I know that Parkway specifically has split classes in the past when there wasn't, um, the, th- they have, they split
No, I'm sorry. I was thinking ahead. I apologize. It's something we decided not to do anymore.
Um, they split classes in the past. And so I just want to make sure that, like I said, due to that staff coverage thing and absences, I believe that that's why that was happening. So again, to a follow-up for my staff coverage question, wondering and hoping that that will not continue. And that there will be other plans in place for staff coverage. Okay, I see you.
We talked, yeah, we talked about that specifically this week. That's why I apologize. I was already like mad into the next part. Um, because we don't want to mix cohorts with, with this new variant. Yeah.
And then i- mixing and just the more stress on the teachers as well. No, okay. Thank you. Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. And Ms. Carnegie, if you have, uh, something brief too?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, um, kind of have a final comment, um, of regarding communication. I know this is an incredibly stressful time and quite frankly, has been for two and a half years and things are changing rapidly. Um, you know, I would, I guess I'm just a little shocked at the school board meeting to be learning new information. For example, that I could request some accommodations for my children who have special healthcare needs. Um, I didn't know that. Um, there seemed to be some, I didn't know that, you know, a sibling could go and get tested at school, that it wasn't just for kids. So these are details that naturally of course are, can get lost in the hustle and bustle and all of this. But I really just want to challenge the administration and the board again. If you think you are communicating enough, please double it. Because it probably isn't enough and it's so easy to be on information overload and think you have it down only for something to pivot and you, and you've lost that key piece. And so I think if we're moving forward and, and we only for something to pivot and you, and you've lost that key piece. And so I think if we're moving forward and, and really the focus on staying in school and not going virtual, that's going to become much more, more important for parents to feel at ease is to know that I'm getting all the information that makes me feel safe and makes me feel like my kids are safe. And so I just want to really challenge everyone again to really double down on these communication pieces.
Can I address, just say something real quick?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, so one, one way that we're hoping to do that as a board, and I'm going to start with this meeting, is we've decided to do board meeting wrap-ups which will be more informative than say minutes, you know, but have some of this information because some of the things that you're just hearing about have been discussed in meetings before, but you're right, maybe they haven't made it their ways to other, um, channels of communication. So that was one way that, um, in our communications committee, we thought, here's another way to try to get some of this information that we discuss at these, these types of meetings out to the community. So that's, that's one way, but we definitely hear you and I think are all, all tuned in to trying to over, no such thing as TMI right now, it feels like.
I feel that. I feel that.
And then another quick note is we do have a communication survey coming out next week. So that's going to give us so much information on what is everybody's preferred method? What is working well? What isn't working well? What do you want us to keep doing? What do you want us to change? So we're really, really looking forward to getting that information from families, from staff, from students, from the community so that we can come up with an action plan specifically around communication. So we can continue to improve that. And please don't hesitate to email the board, to call us, to email the administrators. I think we get frustrated when the information isn't there, but I don't think anyone is, is intentionally withholding it. I think if the information is there and, and you have the ability to ask or reach out, we'll figure out how to get the answers, right? I mean, I think that's what I'm seeing when we're pushing people to the right channels for information. So I think we just have to keep doing that and all keep holding each other accountable. And this is probably just enough, and I know this would be a lot, but there is a space on the website that we created that has every single communication we've sent all year. So if you ever feel like you missed something, it's just called district communication and it's by date. And it's like every letter, every email, every single thing we've sent, which I know you're not going to want to go comb through that, but it's just another resource. Um, if people are talking about something that happened and you didn't see that flyer or whatever, they would all be there. So we're working on it. We hear you. We hear you.
Appreciate that comment as well. Um, okay, we have another person here, Jeff Hoke.
Hi, thanks. Jeff Hoke, seventy-two, sixty-five North Wayside Court, Glendale. Um, first off, thank you for doing what you can to keep our kids in school. I think it's infinitely important. Um, I would just ask a question if the district would consider even more creative measures to keep kids in school? Like if there's a fraction of teacher A's section that's out and a fraction of teacher B's section that out, could we without overcrowding a classroom, I totally get that. Can we put like the healthy portion of A and the healthy portion of B in the classroom A and then classroom B teacher teaches the virtual? I know it's not ideal, but I feel that having kids in school is that important for both families, their social, emotional, parents' ability to work and the family structure itself. Um, obviously I know you're maybe not going to answer that publicly right now, but would you consider things like that? Or I'm asking you to consider things like that being as creative as possible to do. And I think you guys have done a phenomenal job, but to keep kids in school with even more creativity. And yeah, I get it. It's going to be harder on the teachers. Like, I'm one myself. Um, I get it, but it's that big of a deal, I think, for our kids, particularly for the amount of school that our district has been virtual versus even some of the other surrounding districts that have been virtual, um, for less of an amount because there's an impact on the kids. So I would just ask the district to be even more creative. And you hear my barking dog.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if, looks like we have no other hands up. And so I'm just going to do a quick roundup, uh, going once, uh, going twice and, uh, I'm going to close visitor participation. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. Day was a long meeting, but I, I'm glad that everyone was able to show up and, uh, and I'm glad that we've been able to address, uh, the topics that we addressed today. So just my thanks to the administration and the board for making time and, uh, also apologies for the difficulty, uh, in scheduling, uh, for today. Um, with that said, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Agreed.
And a second, uh, and I will do it on a voice vote. All in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Uh, we look forward to seeing you at our various committee meetings or at our uh, regular board meeting in two weeks from Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.